January regular board meeting to order. Joy, can you do the roll?
Mr. Wickliffe. Mr. Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Beveridge.
Here.
Mr. McKeon.
Here.
Ms. Schultz.
Here.
Ms. Velter.
Here.
Mr. Geary.
Here.
Will you all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we will begin with public comments. Brian, would you like to read?
Yes, I would like to read.
Okay.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name. Tonight, we request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. A staff person will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board, and if response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask the speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audio recorded as a matter of public record. Thank you.
All right, we have two public speakers tonight. The first one is Brian Connell.
Hello.
Hi there.
Minnesota lines are getting shorter. And the length got longer, but I'm still going to keep it short. So first, I am Brian Connell. I've got a senior, Elathah West, and a sophomore, Elathah North. And I'm going to tell you, they are actually excited. They are happy to get up in the morning. They're happy to go to school. And so I really wanted to just reiterate what I said in November is, I want to thank you. You know, it's hard, as apparent enough, getting your kids to wake up, let alone wanting to go to school. It's half-day, but it's five days a week. So it's better than every other school district in this region, period. I just want to thank you for your leadership in this region and your commitment to getting all of the kids into the school classrooms with their teachers where they're all safest and provide the optimal whole-student learning experience. Scholastic, physical, mental, emotional, social, all of these things matter today. And the future of our kids, our teachers, our communities and school district are all based on your maintenance and forward-thinking of keeping kids in school. Now, when I bring up legacy, I've got a senior. We talk about, what is your legacy? What are you going to do when you graduate? Now, some of y'all know I carry an AED back there, and I know people online mock me when I carry it and I show it. My kid died on the mound pitching two years ago. So I carry an AED as a reminder that life is precious. And what do you do with it when you get it back? So legacy is a conversation we have a lot. What are you doing? What are you going to do when you go to college? I did get academic and baseball scholarships to college here in Kansas, so we're pretty excited about that. Legacy is defined as what one leaves behind for the organization and the people you serve. And I'm sure some of you have given thought to your legacy in this community and the board and schools. And I encourage you to continue to be focused on the children because their success, their health, physically, mentally, emotionally, will be your long-term legacy. That leads me to address two concepts. And I had wrote this before. I knew a concept about victimism and resiliency. Victimism, an acquired personality trait in which people think of themselves as victims of the actions of others. And behave as a victim in any way or situation, even when evidence and circumstances show I'm a believer in showing up. I won't be a victim. A lot of people lash out at you from afar or on the Internet, or people lash out at me or anyone else because of their victimization mindset. Show up! Stand up! Have an opinion. Doesn't make it right or wrong. But resiliency is really the other side of the coin. An acquired, now it's the same two words, acquired mindset or psychological quality that allows a person to be knocked down by adversities of life and come back at least as strong as before, recovering quickly from illness, change, or misfortunes. Notice both are taught. Resilience is not victimhood. It's not bullying, and resilience cannot be mandated. There's not a lot of things in this country people want to force on people, but resilience is taught. That's part of the legacy. Your legacy as board members during this last year and this next year will be defined on how you encourage and support either victimism or resiliency. And I was one happy to see that I think there's someone presenting tonight on resilience. And that was really exciting for me to see. Every person's been affected by coronavirus, and I will encourage and support you in being strong leaders who always focus on the kids first and foremost. And I will say the same thing I said every time. Kids and teachers are safest in the school classrooms and on the field of play together, period. So thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Megan Bricks.
Good evening, board. It's good to see you today. I didn't bring my seating perks. But I'm a music teacher here in Elathah, and I really wanted to show up tonight to thank you for all that you do for our district. I know it has been really tricky, especially me being on the side of the teacher and just seeing all that we've gone through since March until now. There's a lot of decisions that have been made. But I really want to thank you for your leadership and all that you've done to support us. I also want to thank all the board members and district administration that are here, as well as our only president for going into the classrooms, going into the schools and doing as much as you can for us, providing us masks. It's just so nice to see that. It's refreshing to see you in the schools, interacting with kids, whether it's six feet apart or reading a story to them during library class. So thank you so much. And my last thing, I've always said every time I've spoken that I'm here to support all the educators. So no matter what I'm speaking about, I'm always here. I'm always going to show up and represent all the teachers here in Elathah. So again, thank you for your leadership and service.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, and that ends our public comments. Is Mr. Dewis here? Oh, okay. So our next item on the agenda is a presentation from Tim Dewis, who's the director of Johnson County Mental Health. And he's stepping forward now.
Nothing like walking in and taking the mic.
Give you a chance to breathe. Would you please?
Well, I thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. What I thought I'd do is just share a few comments and then ask you all if there's any specific questions that you have in regards to mental health and resilience. So, and I have a few prepared comments, but something actually hit me earlier this week when I read a comment that said, "Students are failing, and the schools therefore are failing." And I really had an issue with that in that, from my perspective, students are managing a global pandemic for the first time in history. Educators are managing a global pandemic for the first time in history. Mental health workers, in fact, all of us are managing a global pandemic for the first time in history. And I think it's important for us to just sit back and put that into context. Nobody's failing. We're doing the best that we can as human beings to manage a really, really, really difficult situation. Over the past several months, our public health officials have been providing us recommendations about how we can reduce and mitigate COVID-19, the virus. They've told us to wear a mask, maintain physical distance. I said, "Maintain physical distance" because I believe we have to maintain physical distance, but we have to stay socially connected. So I've never liked the word "social distance." We've been asked to avoid large gatherings, wash our hands, and if you're sick, don't go to work. As the infection rate continues in our community, I think it's even more important that we implement mitigating mental health efforts. And so what I want to share with you are five things they think it's really important for you all to think about and for us as a community to think about. The first is acknowledgement. We're amidst, like I said earlier, a global pandemic that's devastated our health, our economic system, our education system, and each of us personally. We cannot overcome or manage well or recover from anything unless we admit that we're amidst it. And so my first thing is that in order for us to stay mentally healthy, to improve our mental health, we all have to get on the same page. We're amidst a global pandemic, and it's hurting us in multiple ways, not to just mention our physical health. The second thing is that we have to be mindful and we have to regulate our emotions. Emotion regulation allows us to become reflective as opposed to reactive. There's a big difference there. Reactive insinuates emotion, and quite frankly, we need to take the emotion out of it and have a response. The fear and anxiety about the virus and what could happen is absolutely overwhelming, and it creates strong emotions among a lot of people. But that's why we have to be important, that's why it's so important, that we work to be mindful and that we regulate those emotions. That coping with stress in a healthy way makes each of us and each of the people that we care about more resilient to overcome the pandemic and all the other things that have occurred in our community over the last 10 months. The one thing I would like to share is that you can also find a lot of self-care resources on our Johnson County Mental Health Center website. You go to mental health, education, outreach, and then there's a community, what we call community toolbox. And we developed that community toolbox for everyone in our community to be able to go and to have some actual resources about, okay, how do I be mindful? How do I demonstrate to the people around me, particularly our kids, to regulate our The third thing I think we have to do is we have to share a narrative of hope. This narrative of hope reminds us and reminds those around us that while the world has changed, it is temporary. Things will get better. This is a season. It's become a long season, but it is a season. And we have the ability to control a couple of things, and that is how we react. And the narrative that we provide to people around us, we can provide a narrative that is one of what I would call negativity. That narrative demonstrates and tells people that we've been victims, that we should be angry, that we've lost this time. Or we can choose to have a narrative and display a narrative of empowerment. One where we ask one another about how we're doing, one that's a narrative of delayed gratification, that we know this is a season, one of adaptation, of resilience, and of grieving and moving forward. One of the things that I speak a lot about within the Mental Health Center is that we all have the innate ability to learn, change, and grow as human beings. It's one of the fundamental things that make us unique. It allows us to overcome all kinds of barriers, tragedies, global pandemics. The fourth thing they think we have to do is provide gratitude and help others. There is a host of research that demonstrates that you gain positive health, that there are positive health benefits, mental health benefits as well as physical health benefits when you help others. It lifts your mood. It refrains your negative thoughts. It lets us experience the potential of human connection. Before the pandemic started, I got asked to speak at a number of places and have worked with all the school districts here. And I talked, I had a little presentation that, "The 10 Things That Keep Me Up at Night" in Johnson County. And they were things like underage drinking, social media, the agitator, the suicide rate. All those things were happening prior to the pandemic. We've just begun to talk about them openly because of the pandemic. They're all there. Helping others, asking one another unleashes that potential of human connection. It allows us to be able to support one another through this process. In my experience, over 30 years in the mental health system, I've not met a single individual who's overcome anything, a major mental illness or a death in a family, that said, "You know, Tim, I did it all on my own." It requires that we have people who believe in us and stand by us. I also like to make sure that I provide resources. So there are ways that we, if we're being self-reflective, don't necessarily maybe think that we demonstrate enough gratitude or help others. There's ways that we as a community can do that. You can participate in a virtual mental health first aid class. There was one today. I think there's a youth mental health first aid class later this month. And we all know what first aid is. Mental health first aid is just that. It's first aid to help people that maybe are experiencing a difficult time. And it helps provide us the language, the narratives, to speak with people and how to outreach them. There's also something called question and persuade and refer, which is offered virtually. And you may hear it referred to as QPR. It's a suicide, it's a suicide first aid type training where you can learn how to ask difficult questions and how you can ensure or at least express your caring concern about an individual and how to respond if they tell you they're going to take their life. And all of these resources, again, are accessible on our website, or you can simply call our prevention services. I'm going to give you a number, 913-715-7880. And then finally, the fifth thing is, is that I don't want to discount the gravity of the current situation. So we have to be able to connect people to professional help when they need that help. People with pre-existing mental health conditions, people with substance abuse disorders are particularly vulnerable during these times. And so I think it's important that as we move forward, that we make sure that we know how to connect people to the resources. And if people are experiencing symptoms, higher levels of anxiety, which are all natural, if it becomes overwhelming day in and day out for an extended period of time, we need to connect them with professional help. The best way that you can do that is to call our 24-hour crisis line, 913-268-0156. Two master's-level clinicians available 24 hours a day. Unfortunately, I don't think we've seen the worst of the pandemic and the tragic loss of life. And I believe that people will continue to struggle with mental health issues. Like I said earlier, unfortunately, we've been struggling as a community for a time now. I will say that I do believe our community has done a really good job, in particular over the last three years. The Mental Health Center has relationships with each of the school districts and actually an amazing relationship with the Elathah School District. It has worked really hard to remove the stigma associated with accepting or asking for help. We've seen a decrease in suicide. Last year, we saw a 20% decrease in suicide. This year, a global pandemic, we didn't see a decrease, but we didn't see an increase What we did see was an increase of people reaching out for help. And that's important to realize because that means we've done our job in making sure that people know where and how to ask for help, and we've... Mental health is critical, and we should be focused on how to help our loved ones process their current experiences, whether that be with the pandemic or the issues that occurred the last week. And then we need to help pivot and help them identify what they need to cope, to manage that. One of the things that has amazed me in the work that really the superintendent started with the Zero Reasons Why campaign is I've had the opportunity to work with some amazing young people. And the one thing that I've realized in working with them is that they themselves, while struggling, have found amazing new ways to manage this pandemic. I believe that when we're on the other side of what we're experiencing now, if we continue to take the road that we have and do the things, the five things that I've talked about, I think we'll reflect back and see that we have supported a generation of students, of young people, that are well-prepared to face anything in their lifetime and overcome it. Because simply if they can overcome this experience, they're going to be prepared. I'll stop there and just see if there are any questions or concerns or areas of focus that you have for me tonight.
Any questions?
Tim, I'd ask a quick question. Is there anything that, you mentioned your 10 things that keep you up at night. Is there anything that has been added to that list or replaced here as a result of the pandemic?
No, I think that, quite frankly, it's just exacerbated all 10. So when you think, and that's just the truth. When you think about, and you know, I hear about kids that are struggling doing remote learning and this and that. The thing is, is I also hear about kids that are doing better because they're not getting bullied every day and that they prefer that way of learning. And so I think it's really important that we not generalize one person's experience with another person's experience. So I think to answer that question is, it's just exacerbated all of them. The bullying is still going on in a lot of respects due to social media and tech. I think, you know, that's one of them, that we need to find a good, healthy balance, a tech-life balance. And I think there's ways to do that. Alcohol, the use of alcohol is not an effective coping strategy, and we probably need to make sure that we are demonstrating that to young people around us. But, you know, the one thing that also reminded me of, and then I'll see if any other questions, is that I've made a couple of comments that I think that I'm blaming parents, that I say, you know, "Tim, you're blaming the parents for how the kids are reacting." I'm not, I would never blame anybody for what kids are experiencing right now. But what I can say is that I think it's important for us as adults, kids take their cues from us. If we're negative, they're going to be negative. If they're hostile, they're going to be hostile. If we're positive, they're going to be positive. If we're drinking a lot, they're not going to see a problem with that. So we, how we want our kids to react is greatly dependent upon how we choose to react. And that's why I think it's so important that we have to be mindful about that and intentional.
I kind of feel like I've been to church, so I always love to hear you speak, Tim. Thank you. Because you're a voice of reason in the wilderness. And hey, kudos on the 20% drop in suicide completions last year. I mean, we can't say enough. I mean, it still is an epidemic issue.
Absolutely.
But the fact that we haven't seen, I mean, everybody likes to say, "Oh, suicides are increasing." I mean, the data for this year does not support that.
No.
I had asked you a few months ago for it, and I was so surprised. Have suicide attempts... Have suicide attempts, I know those are tricky, would you talk a little bit about?
No, yeah, I can absolutely talk about that. It's really hard. There is, in the United States and within the CDC, there is no way to track effectively a track, a track attempt because it's just so varied. So many of them don't ever even get reported because of fear, because of shame. Others get mistakenly reported, and so there really is no good way in the United States to track attempts. What the best research will tell you is that for every death by suicide, you could expect that there's probably 10 to 20 attempted suicides. So the key is if you know that you're reducing the actual deaths by suicide, then you're actually reducing the number of attempts, if that makes sense.
That makes great sense. The fear and angst, especially, let's just say, teachers, the kids, the data's not necessarily showing there's a huge amount of spread, you know, in the classroom. Our weak link is lunchtime, when you have to have a mask off and you've got monitors there. And then in the classroom, the teachers have kids, especially Megan spoke today, she's a music teacher, and she's got all different kinds of kids coming in, so it's not the cohort model that we want. So angst and fear that they're very much feeling, how can society and us as a board, how can we support them beyond what we're doing now?
Wow.
I know those are moving.
If I had the specific answer to that, I probably could go around the country and share that. You know, I think that, that the, I think the biggest thing is, is to be open and honest, have an honest dialogue, that we're doing everything we can to mitigate the risks, but the fact is, is there are risks. And that each individual parent, child, and teacher, myself, we have to weigh those risks and then make a personal decision. But the fact is, is that as a district, as a leadership group, you're taking mitigating certi, it's not like we're just going insane. Here we are.
How about it?
Right. We're taking thoughtful, intentional mitigating efforts to reduce the risk. And quite frankly, that's what we do with everything. I don't, you know, I wish I had the magic one for that one, but that's the, that's the best way I could answer it.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Anyone else? So I had a question. You had mentioned something about, I think, that more people reached out for services this year. Is that like statistically?
Yes. Yeah, and we'll be producing our annual report, but just initially, right off the bat, if you look at our total number of calls to our crisis service, it's about a 30% increase over last year. And if you look at the number of people who've walked through our doors, and when I say walked through our doors, I mean actual walk through our doors and virtually walk through our doors, it's almost a 60% increase. 60%. And I get asked a lot, "Well, is it more kids or adults?" Way more adults. And that's not surprising to me. We as adults are not, we're not necessarily as easily adaptable. We're not as, we're not as easy to change at a whim. Kids are built that way. That's why they're resilient. That's why we should play on that resilience. It's a strength, and we should promote that strength. So yeah, we've seen some huge increases, and people have said, "Oh, well, that's problematic." And I, I just have to argue and say, "No." It means that people feel comfortable reaching out for help, and that's because of the work that has gone on well before the pandemic started. It has to do with the work that the superintendent brought together, the group, and said, "There's an epidemic of suicides within our schools, and we can't stand this any longer. We've got to do something." And because of that, those efforts, I think that we are, are, we've mitigated the impact. Now, I don't know how long, much longer, we can continue that. I do get worried about that. It is a season, and, and, you know, there is a lot to be hopeful for with the vaccine, those kinds of things, but we still have a ways to go, in my opinion. And so we probably should just have realistic conversations about that.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. That was a wonderful presentation.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. It's nice to be here.
All right. And now I believe we will have an executive session. Can I get a motion?
Sure. I move that board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing individual personnel performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma, and that the board return to the regular board meeting at 7 o'clock.
Second. Okay. A motion by Mr. Geary and a second by Ms. Schultz, I think. Okay.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.[1002.86]
All right. I believe I will give Mr. Allison the floor for a moment here.
Thank you, Mr. Beveridge. You know, as we all reflect, there are key decisions that we make in life. Some of those are easy and some of those are very difficult. As I could think of an easy one, asking my wife to marry me. Waiting for the answer was difficult, but making that decision was not. It grew more difficult when I gave permission for my daughter to go to K-State. A little more difficult. But one of the most difficult that I've had to make was notifying this board earlier in December that I intend to retire at the end of this school year. I've been very fortunate to serve as superintendent of Olathe for the last several years and have really developed a very special feeling for this school district, this community, the board who has been so incredibly supportive in giving me the opportunity to lead the district, a leadership team that's second to none, administrators, teachers, staff, and a community that are so focused and dedicated on education and setting Olathe apart from any other school district in the country. So it was very difficult to make that decision, but at the same time, I've reached a chapter in life where, as a superintendent for almost the last 15 years, excuse me, my family has been supportive, but the time and the commitment that it takes to be a superintendent oftentimes has meant less ability to focus and be with my family. And moving forward, that's what I'd like to do. So I'm not sure that my time in serving in education is finished, whether it's, you know, I have an interest in potentially returning to the classroom or curriculum development. Who knows what the future holds? But I think it's time to pass on the opportunity and am very thankful for my time here in Olathe, but we'll be retiring at the end of this school year.
Well, I was gonna follow that up by a few words. The most important decision a school board makes is hiring a superintendent. I believe Mr. Allison was the perfect fit for the job back in 2017, and he has accomplished so much during his time as superintendent. We're sad to see him leave, but we are also excited for him as he enters the next chapter of his life. During his time as superintendent, Mr. Allison helped set a vision with Olathe's Portrait of a Graduate. With this document, he has laid the foundation for a bright future in Olathe. Mr. Allison has assembled a fantastic leadership team that is ready to carry this vision forward. During his time in the district, Mr. Allison has also provided the Olathe School District with a fresh perspective on education and added key components to our learning process, including Mastery Connect. I can't think, I was thinking about this today, I really can't think of a harder job during a global pandemic than being a superintendent. And Mr. Allison has provided a steady hand for this school district as we navigate a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. And just personally, John, I can't think of anyone else that I would have rather had by our side in leading this district than you during this time, and we appreciate that. So on behalf of the Board of Education and the Olathe community, please join me in thanking Mr. Allison for his service. So the Board of Education also charged Mr. Allison with the preparation of a succession plan for Olathe's future leaders. With that, I would like to announce that Dr. Brent Jaeger will be our next superintendent. The preparedness of Dr. Jaeger to seamlessly assume this key leadership position is an outcome of deliberate efforts by the Board of Education and the vision of John Allison to effectively identify and develop our internal talent. Dr. Jaeger has 20 years of accomplished experience within the classroom and in administrative positions. His leadership of the Learning Service Division has demonstrated a track record of results. Recent highlights include leadership of the district's school improvement process, establishing the diversity and engagement department, and selection for the 2018 Aspiring Superintendents Academy, a cohort of 18 nationally selected participants. Mr. Allison and Dr. Jaeger will spend the remainder of the school year preparing for the transition and will be working to replace his position in Learning Services. Dr. Jaeger has a background in ethnic studies and Title I education and believes in the importance of attracting district staff and leadership of diverse backgrounds. He is committed to making this the central part of our work in the district. Olathe's future is bright. So on that note, can I get a motion from somebody from the board?
I move to approve Dr. Brent Jaeger's employment as superintendent of schools effective July 1, 2021.
Second. Motion by Mr. Boyd and a second by Mr. McKeon.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Join me in congratulating Dr. Jaeger. Kind of anticlimactic after that to go to consent, action consent agenda items. Does anyone have any comments on the consent agenda 6.01 through 6.10? If not, can I get a motion?
I would move to approve action items 6.01 through 6.10.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeon, second by Mr. Gary.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes. Okay. Onto action bids, contracts, and agreements, 7.01 to 7.07. Does anyone have any questions on those that they'd like to pull out?
I did. I was wondering if we could pull out item 7.06 and talk a little bit about the agreement on the internet. And I mean, that's a pretty big focus there. I don't know if you can give us just a little bit of clarity in what went into the decision-making and that and just some of those types of things, please.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Verlinic to give you some details there.
Yeah, I'll just touch on some key points, a little higher-level view of it. This recommendation, first, if I could thank my team and the Business Finance Department for all their help, this is a pretty large project and we're really excited about the changes and improvements it's gonna bring to the district. This recommendation provides us with the ease of scalability. That's something that we don't have right now. Currently, it takes a large-scale project to upgrade our network, and there's always unknown costs associated with that. With this new agreement, we wouldn't have any unknown costs, and we'd have the ability to make those changes whenever we see fit. Excuse me. We'll also now have a private, dedicated network solely to the Olathe School District. In other words, we won't be sharing any of our bandwidth or any data lines with any other customers. So it'll be a private network which allows us to troubleshoot, manage, monitor at a level that we can't right now. And all of these things that we can do with a significantly reduced rate annually, which is what we're really excited about, is we're making big upgrades to the network in our district, but we're also saving the district money annually.
And what, do you have an idea of about how much?
About, estimated roughly $850,000 per year.
Oh, wow. Great work.
Other question?
Yeah, I want to thank Matt and his team in finance. And this has been a major undertaking, something that, you know, had been a major focus for Mr. Hutchison and myself, to making sure that we looked at options that were available. And they've done an incredible job, very thoroughly vetting, looking at those options. And this really is one of those rare occasions where, in all capacities of this, we will improve our system, our support, our ability to deal with what may come at us and do so at a cost savings. And it very rarely works out that way. Technology is critical to the functioning of the district and instruction. We know that now, or have known that. We know that now more than ever as we entered that pandemic phase on what that means. And they've done a fantastic job, and this really positions us for a foreseeable period of time that when we're ready and able to implement, to have the scalability. Who knows what technology requirements, bandwidth, all of those things look like two years from now, let alone five years from now? And this will give the district the capability to maintain that flexibility, adaptability, and meet the needs of whatever may come our way. So they've done a great job, a lot of work before we get to the point that we get to implement all this, which is forthcoming. But this is a huge step forward for our school district.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any other questions or comments, 7.01 through 7.07? If not, can I get a motion?
I move to approve items 7.01 through 7.07 as presented. Second.
Motion by Ms. Schultz, second by Ms. Felter.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Moving on to action other, 8.01 through 8.02. Any questions or comments on these two items? If not, can I get a motion?
I move to approve action other items 8.01 and 8.02 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gary, second by Mr. McCune.
Boyd.
Mr. Boyd.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I couldn't tell who said it first.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
All right, and moving along on the agenda, future action items we have there, 9.01 to 9.11 for future. And down to written information, December Head Start Director's Report. And then on to topics of discussion for the board. Does anyone have anything they'd like to discuss?
We have our data review tomorrow as far as our COVID dashboard, right?
Correct. Tomorrow's when we take our snapshot of the data and then we'll actually, it's on Monday that we'll look at where the data is in relation to the gating criteria and then move forward.
Okay.
Go ahead.
How's it going since Christmas? I'm watching the Johnson County Department of Health, and it looks like the little graft is going down, the graft the way we want it to. But I know you talked with the Department of Health this week. Are they hopeful?
They are hopeful. You know, you saw the increase. I mean, we got very close to that 15% morgue, a number of new cases per 100,000. We've seen a little bit of a downtick over the last couple of years, or last couple of years, last couple of days, seems like years, last couple of days. And, you know, I think we'll probably be pretty close to where we were today, which was about 14, in the 14% range. They're hoping that maybe we've seen the peak of the holidays, though the New Year's component, you know, we've still got a little bit of time. The concern still tends to be the hospitalization. That's flattened out some, but still very high. And, you know, that we might see some, what I would consider to be maintaining current status over the next couple of weeks. They've expressed some concern about the new variant that is available, and they just, they're assuming that it's present in Kansas, but they don't know for sure at this point in time. So we just continue to monitor. Those are weekly phone calls with the Health Department. We've now got a semester of our own internal data, which I think will be important as we make decisions moving forward, and that'll give us, we continue to analyze and try to correlate where, what does our internal data show in relation to community spread and hospitalization and those types of factors? So we'll have our snapshot on Monday. That will take us through the next couple of weeks then, based on the gating criteria. And I think we'll be prepared to look at both county, state is continuing to evaluate it. We understand that the CDC is gonna do kind of another potential recommendation to schools sometime here toward the beginning of February. So by our February meeting, we may have some more data and information to talk about.
And how's our substitute situation?
Right now, we're doing really well. Both last week and this week, to this point in time, we're in the upper 90s where we would be in a more normal year, or pretty close to. Again, it just depends on community spread, and we'll have to see what happens over time. But, you know, we had folks that answer our pleas to sign up to be substitutes. This time of year, we also have the opportunity of picking up some of those individuals that finished their student teaching, first semester. Our Human Resource Department has been very aggressive in their marketing, early hires of many of those student-teacher candidates that we had that were real quality first semester, to bring them on and utilize them in substituting. So really trying to look at all the options, the way that we can make sure we have the support necessary for our teachers in our buildings to be able to keep school up.
Thank you.
John, you mentioned the CDC and reviewing that criteria. Is their goal to adjust that criteria so we can get our kids back into school sooner and full-time?
That may be a result of some of that review. But, you know, as we entered this pandemic, there was just, there were so many unknowns. And now that we've gone through time, they're able to look at school districts, you know, whether it's those that have been hybrid or those that have been all-in, and look at that data to see what's really going on in our schools. Our schools, the spreaders, that some thought is, you know, what's the risk level for students? What's the risk level for staff? And now that we've had a period of time, I think that's what, my understanding is, they're stepping back to look at it and say, what do we really know now? What's the information show? Because at the beginning of this school year, we didn't know. Nobody did. But, you know, having a semester in, you know, four or five months of that information, and that's my understanding, both CDC and the Kansas Department of Health will be taking that into consideration as they give guidance moving forward.
Mr. Allison, is it possible, or I guess with the board, maybe at the next, I know we're kind of having a board meeting here later in January, and our first Thursday's pretty early in February, I think it's the 4th is our next meeting. Is there a way that we can begin some discussions? I know we're gonna get a pretty good track record through January of, I think we've heard publicly that USD 232 Next Door, DeSoto, Mill Valley High Schools are attempting, hopefully for their sakes, to get in person February 1. And of course, we're getting hit with a lot of questions about that. Can we have a little discussion about what it would, what it looks like for us and kind of where our plans are to get that back in, outside of just the general gating and just some numbers? Should that be possible?
Yes, I think in February, I think the aspect is you've got to look at the whole picture and the actual information. So if you look at DeSoto's decision, they're much like we are. When we look at our snapshot date, we're looking a couple, making a decision for a couple of weeks out.
Correct.
And they've done the exact same thing. Their board meeting was just where it fell, and the way in which they've done their sequencing is closer to a month-to-month, where we're really evaluating about every two weeks. So under the gating, their current gating criteria, which is the state gating criteria, they would be right in that, on the line for hybrid and secondary being in on a full-time basis. But that'll be contingent upon what happens in the next two weeks with their gating criteria. But yes, we'll have the information as always. We've taken, and this board has discussed what changes have occurred, what recommendations are there, as we made an adjustment to our gating criteria to include attendance as a local measure. There may be some other information that's available to us, and we'll have our internal data to be able to look at.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Allison, the CDC recently changed their recommendations as relates to vaccinations. Do we know if that has any trickle-down effect on how soon our teachers will ever receive that vaccination or not?
No, not at this point in time. The vaccination piece is, you know, we sent a survey to staff today, actually, asking how many folks would be interested in receiving a vaccination, how many wouldn't, how many were undecided, as we're trying to help the county. The issue with the vaccination component at this point in time is the availability of the vaccine. The way Kansas distributed the vaccines was not necessarily based on the numbers per county. They looked at a more equitable distribution, is the way it's been explained. Right now, the county nor the state has any concrete information on how many more doses we will receive. And then that will be the determining factor on how quickly staff could get vaccines. We've been asked to be prepared to make recommendations here next week on potential prioritization, because if the vaccines come in and they've only got, you know, X number that they're dividing between all the Johnson County school districts, and say there's 500 that would be available to Olathe, they would like our help in taking a look at that. So as you think of our special education teachers that work with some of our highest-risk students, the paraprofessionals, those types of things. So that's something we're discussing now. The medical professionals are working on helping us look at that. So the vaccine, we want to be ready to assist them in any capacity. We've talked to them about volunteering our facilities, you know, utilization of gyms or cafeterias, or even a vaccination day, if that's what it took to get it done and to make that available to our staff. So we'll continue to work with them. Right now, there's just so many unknowns, they're not able to give us any more clarity. But we're having the ongoing conversations, the county is putting plans in place. There's conversation that they're, you know, at what point in time will they involve corporate partners like Walmart and CVS and all of that? What impact does that have? They just, they don't have the information that they can share with us at this point. But that's something that's almost an every-other-day conversation with them as they get that, and we'll continue to communicate it once we know. Hopefully, it's sooner than later. But it's just, right now, it's still a pretty big question mark on when and how many doses will be available for the next year.
Did most of the nurses get the vaccination last week?
Yes, it was available if they wanted to receive it. If you had a licensure that, probably the easiest way to describe it is that was not, that you don't get through the Kansas Department of Education, that you got through the Kansas Health Board, those folks were in that higher priority medical group. And then in the next year will be senior citizens, first responders, and those that are considered critical workers, which is, which are education. So it's just, I think the biggest factor will be how many doses and when do we get them? And they're preparing kind of the, we're gonna get a few, or we're gonna get a lot, and how do we do that and do it as quickly as possible? Part of the issue is also not knowing which vaccine they're getting. The refrigeration requirements are so different between the Pfizer and the Moderna that that makes a whole nother set of logistical aspects that have to be taken into consideration when you're gonna try to give the vaccines. There's also a time limit. Once you break the seal on a vial, you have a, for each vaccine, there's a specific time limit to which you're able to utilize that vaccine. So that's another component. They have to make sure that they're building in, and how do you do that so that we don't waste some of those precious doses? So there's just a, like everything, it seems like it should be simple, but the logistics are significant. And I appreciate the county working with Ms. Morris and our nurses and the school districts to take our suggestions, thoughts, and help us be ready and prepared for, to move forward when we do have the doses available.
That's exciting. Can I ask one more thing? On our discussion in February at our meeting, can we be prepared to compare and contrast our typical protocols for infectious contagious diseases or illnesses, where they were school-based versus the gating criteria for the whole district? And why there's value in one over the other? To me, the school-based protocols are worthy of looking at, because if you've got one school where you have parents sending kids in sick and/or they've been exposed and they're waiting on a test, which we've seen this week, and then all the other schools are cooperating, should they be penalized, you know, with the gating criteria model? Or how could we incorporate that element in our formulas? Is?
Sure, we could talk about it. That element is available today, that if there's an outbreak in a particular school, that that school could be forced to go to remote and those types of things. When we think about individual schools or numbers of students, when you think as large as we are, when we really think about our gating criteria and the percentages, instances like that, you'd have to have a large number of them to impact the overall gating criteria. But yes, I mean, we're following the county recommendation, and that is a component that if they saw an outbreak in a particular school, that that would be treated separately.
It goes to that school.
Yeah, with that school. Fortunately, we haven't seen that particular situation yet, and hopefully not at all. But yeah, whatever questions you have, we'll try to walk through. And it's about, you know, February was the time we talked about this fall. We had decision points as we got to December, you know, as we kind of take these in chunks of time that give us a chance to really see what's happening. And we're due to come back and follow up with what we know now, what recommendations are out there, and how we want to move forward through the rest of the school year.
Awesome. Thank you.
And I was just going to reiterate what Mr. Gary said, that that meeting's coming up pretty quickly. You know, normally we have four to five weeks between meetings, but, you know, that meeting will be a full month or, you know, three or four weeks of full school and give us an opportunity to discuss that. I wanted to make one comment about the NSBA conference, April 8 through 10. Joy handed me a flyer. So if you're interested, it's virtual this year. So if you're interested in going, you can take a look at this flyer, or I'm sure Joy can register you if you email her.
Can I make one more? Oh, go ahead.
I have one more quick question for you, John. John, are we a part of a group of schools or peer schools from around the country? Edmund?
Our benchmark schools, yes.
What are they called?
Our benchmark schools.
Benchmark schools. Have we been in contact with any of them? I think it's eight or 10 of them as far as their reopening, their criteria. I realize that our numbers are specific to us, and that's what we need to concentrate on. But have they had success in opening schools full-time? And if they have, why? If they have not?
Yeah, we've had discussions. You know, it's interesting that every state has taken a different approach. You know, some have been very state mandated and direct, and others have been much more local controlled. So those are conversations, I'm not going to say they're on a, they're pretty close to about every six week or so that I've had different conversations with some of the superintendents I know. HR has had dialogue. So we have tried to learn, you know, when we had these discussions clear back in August at the start of school, that we would try to learn from other school districts. And that's the advantage of, you know, publications like Ed Week and different educational organizations that are collecting quite a bit of information and comparative and helping provide school districts with what's working, what's not. But that caveat has really been about what's going on in the local community. You know, the community spread, the hospitalization rate, those types of things. You know, New York has been very different than Kansas in some of those conversations. But yes, we do, and we'll continue to try to look at what's working, what lessons are learned. We're all in this together, no reason to try to reinvent the wheel, so to speak, as we work through that.
Thank you.
I was just going to, I just wanted to change real quick to just say publicly, personally, at the same time, thank you to Mr. Allison. I know I was elected right when we both started at the same time here, and having a superintendent like yourself to help guide me as a board member has been incredibly beneficial to me and my development as a board member. And obviously, the things that Joe mentioned are speak for themselves, but I just want to say thank you personally to you. So thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. And we made you talk during our comment section. Do you have any other comments you'd like to make?
I actually do have a couple. One, very excited about a new opportunity for our community, and that's the Community Partners for a Safe Environment, known as SPOT. And it's a community partnership involving the Olathe Public Schools, the Johnson County Department of Corrections, the Olathe Public Library, Johnson County Mental Health, the Olathe Fire Department, and the Olathe Police Department. And they received some grant help from our foundation to help get an initiative started, which is designed to provide homework support, mentorships, and in a fun and safe environment for secondary students. So the SPOT is going to be located at the Johnson County Youth and Family Service Center, and it'll be hosted starting off Tuesdays from 3 to 5. It's going to allow students, grade 6 through 12, an opportunity to come build their social capacity. They're going to have mentoring opportunities available, homework help, just a positive, safe place for them to be able to come together and do so in a safe environment in a pandemic. But this is just a huge opportunity for students in our community and all of these groups coming together to make this happen. Very unique, very excited about this. The Olathe Public Schools, of course, is going to be very much engaged with this with Mr. Razzo and Mr. Harrison as a part of the group that's going to be helping put this together. So stay tuned for more information and some updates on the SPOT as we move forward. The next is, this is Board Appreciation Month. And thank yous are not enough for you all and for school boards around the country who run to be an unpaid volunteer to serve their community. And I don't think there's any other elected group in this country that have had to deal with as difficult an issue as the pandemic for schools, and how important that is to community and service of our students and our staff and all of that. And I think in particular, so many other elected bodies kick the can down the road to where so many critical decisions ended up in your lap that shouldn't necessarily have been there. But you as a board have stepped up, you've met the challenges, you've made the tough decisions, you've tried to be fair and equitable and look out for all of our students and our staff and our community. So I think it's our turn to give you all a round of applause for everything you do, and particularly this year in a pandemic. And as superintendent, I will double your salary from this point moving forward. Last is, I just want to congratulate Dr. Jaeger. I am so confident that, as Mr. Beveridge said earlier, that our future is bright with his leadership. He's an intelligent, capable individual that has a passion for education and understanding for this community, and will be able to take this district to new levels. I look forward to seeing the accomplishments of Olathe into the future. And I want to go on record officially as saying, I knew he was something special when he was in my ninth grade world geography class as a student. Now, I'm not going to say that world geography was his favorite or best subject, but...
He saved my life, Mr. Allison.
Yeah, that's for sure. But it's been great working with him and seeing him as he's prepared to step into a new role, but also with the confidence that the leadership team he has here to, as I have had to support the work of the school districts, as I said earlier, second to none. And I know that where this school district will go in the future has no limits, and that as we think about some of those pretty lofty goals that were established in the strategic plan, I have no doubt that you will achieve those. So with that, I will conclude my remarks.
All right. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.